Good evening, everyone. Want to call to order the June 3, 2025, meeting of the Douglas Board of Selectmen. To order, if we could all stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, good evening, everyone. For chairman's announcements, the only thing I would do is give a shout out to the Douglas Girls' varsity softball team. Had a big first-round win against the scrappy team from Lunenburg on Sunday. Had the fortune of traveling out there and watched our girls come back from, I think it was a three or a five-nothing deficit. So, kudos to Coach Furno and the team. We are going to bounce around absent our town administrator, who is pulling double duty today. So, the first thing I'd like to do is bounce to number six, which is a public hearing for picnic in the park and entertainment license and food truck approval on town meeting. That public hearing is now open. Rota, would you like to come forward?
Hello?
How are you today?
Good, how are you?
Good, thank you.
That's it?
Yeah, please. This is where we pepper you with a lot of crazy questions. Now, tell us, it's not your first rodeo. You're growing this, aren't you?
Yes, I'm trying. This is our third year. I'm going to try to keep it the same as I did last year, with some food trucks, a little craft fair, some games, and a bunch of other nonprofit organizations that do similar. They specialize in special needs. And they just come set up an informational booth and share what they deal with the public. It's kind of all ties it together.
Excellent. Do you have a team, or is it just a one-person show?
This year, I finally pulled together a couple ladies that are going to help me. Calling it a committee, finally.
Yeah, a committee of just a couple. You know what they say, if you want something done, give it to a busy person.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, I have no issues. Lisa, we had saw nothing from police or fire or of any concern?
No. I've just asked Rota to keep in touch with vendors she has coming in. With you, the only thing you're approving for her tonight would be the food trucks on the town property and the entertainment license. So, with the food trucks, I did talk to Rota about a cutoff date for July 11. That would give the Board of Health and Fire Department enough time to inspect any of those food trucks or food vendors. Other than that, everything's pretty much the same as it was the past two years before.
All right. I did check. The porta-potties are still up there. So, that's helpful.
Yes. Usually, Ben's container donates another, a second potty. But this year, he wants to donate trash barrels instead. Because last year, we got a little crazy with the trash. The food trucks didn't bring their own barrels, so got crazy.
Yeah.
So, I thought barrels would be more handy.
We may be able to ask the baseball and softball club to get that cleaned up before this. I'll make a note to do that.
Okay.
Just ask for her, just keep me and us in the loop as it gets closer to let Recreation Commission know what's going on, as well as, you know, you guys.
Yeah. That was one component. The Rec. Commission really should be involved in this in some capacity. It's probably not feasible at this stage. I don't anticipate that meeting.
Well, I think John Furno's been aware of it.
Yeah.
As far as the Fire Department end, which he's also on the Rec. Commission. So, I just think feeding me as much information as we go along as you can.
Okay.
I can spread that word to the Rec. Commission, the Fire Department, Board of Health, whoever need me to.
Okay. So, I just send it to you and you get it to whoever?
Yep. And I will disperse it.
Okay. I can do that.
Yep.
Is there any in the audience that's adamantly opposed to picnic in the park?
Sounds like a romantic comedy picnic in the park.
Yeah. Romance is no picnic. I'll tell you that.
Ooh, you're talking about it.
She doesn't watch the show, don't worry. Any questions of the board of Rota?
I think just the only question is, the date that you picked for August 2. Did you just coordinate that with the softball? Because sometimes they do tournaments. You know what I mean?
No, I sent it to...
To John Furno?
He signed off on the original application.
Okay.
I see.
Yeah, I just don't, you know, worry about a conflict of two events showing up at the same time, you know?
I did not. I just assumed there was nothing going on in the summer.
Okay. Sometimes you used to host a big tournament there.
Yeah, no, it's, I think, gone are the days of the great Douglas softball tournaments of yesteryear.
It hasn't had any conflicts in the previous couple of years.
No.
I can triple-check that for her, but I don't think there was a conflict. But I will check.
Yeah, just so someone can market book or something like that. So, someone doesn't show up and, you know, decide to host batting cages or something like that.
Yeah.
So, well, tell them that, I'm good.
All right. Motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Made by Mike.
Second.
Seconded by Hal. All those in favor, aye? And now a motion to let Rota do...
Have a picnic.
Have a picnic.
Make a motion to approve the entertainment license in the food truck on town property.
Made by Mike.
Second.
Seconded by Ross. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. There you have it.
Thank you all very much.
Use those trash cans.
Yes. Thank you.
Right. Again, Mr. Wojcik is pulling double duty, so I'm going to bounce around a little bit. And I see, Bob, you're in the audience. Does he want to maybe make it an early night for you, if there's such a thing? Come forward. I think you put this on our agenda, maybe with the help of Ross. For those keeping a score at home, this is item number nine, the Riverwalk Concept from the Master Plan Committee. Hello.
Carol's supposed to, Carol Gogolinski's in the next room, so she won't be joining me.
Okay. Is it too early? We can come back.
No.
Okay.
I'll take you up on your offer.
Yeah.
Up on the screen is the, we're going to go through a quick slideshow, 13 slides. The first slide is just a picture of the Mechanic Street Bridge, Monford River underneath.
Next.
Can you see it all right? You can see it on that one, too?
Oh, yeah.
This is just table of contents. I'm going to show you three towns surrounding us, Webster, Putnam, and Northbridge, what they've done already, and then what we can do for We've received the master plan survey results. We sent out about over 1,000 surveys. We got 894 back, which according to CMRPC is excellent. She's never seen that type of response for this, for a town this size. On page eight, under economic development, there's one question, what activities and amenities would increase your visits to downtown area of Douglas? The number-one response, from 68% of those 894, was more places to walk, such as a Riverwalk along the Monford River. A lot of comments in there about Putnam. If you've ever been to Putnam, it's a pretty nice establishment, the way they've got their set up. And there's just more comments in this booklet. Monford Riverwalk would be really nice. The town should also build a park with amenities for residents. Walkway along Monford River would increase desirability for the walking downtown. Some municipal parking, little walking trail along the Monford River. Riverwalk, please. A Monford Riverwalk would be really nice. Absolutely need a Riverwalk. Riverwalk, capital letters, explanation point. And this is the one I like, just like Putnam, Connecticut, with Riverwalks. So, that's the comments that I came back to the Master Plan Committee. After one of the meetings, Carol, myself, and...
Margaret.
Margaret Bacon. We're sitting there thinking, man, we could do something with these comments. So, we just took this a little further than just the comments, to see what we could come up with. Margaret being a civil engineer, she volunteered a time for some drawings, and we just went out and got the pictures. This is Webster, right here. They have five phases. Phase one is done. Phase two they're doing right now. And there's three more phases, and they will have that probably over a mile long along the French River.
Also, Bob, Margaret was involved in that one, designing that one, correct?
Yeah, Margaret did design this one. So, she was involved in the Webster project. Next one, please. This is what it looks like. It's, right now, it's just a little parking area, walking area, benches. It's right up against the riverfront. And it just makes a little more traction downtown. They took an area that was pretty rundown and turned it into something beautiful. Next one, Pat, please. This is the one on Putnam. Putnam is probably the longest out of all of them. It's up against their main street. Our main street is not on the river, neither is Putnam. They did an excellent job. If you look in that little oval picture, they've got a nice stone statue there with the name Putnam right on it. It's a five-foot paved, a walking trail. A lot of runners, joggers, a lot of couples walking. It was just, it's right along the river. Next one, Pat. And our buddies in Northbridge, they took all their opera funds, by the way, and built this thing. They had two sections. They were disconnected because they needed an elevated section. So, they built the elevated section with all the opera funds they got. Next one, Pat. This is kind of looking where we could actually put one right now. Could be built in phases. This could be it. It's what we decide. This is on B Street. This property is owned by Mr. Jackman right now. He's been approached. He is amendable to something like this. And this is just basically on B Street, nothing crossing the river as of yet. Next one, Pat, please. This is just a little parking lot with a walking trail and some benches. And this is all within the riverfront, but so aren't the other three projects. So, this is all doable. And this type of project is actually exempt from conservation. You're allowed to do this, the walking trails. And the parking lot is on top of an old building right now that's been demolished. It's probably a 10-foot-high mound of dirt and stone and whatever the remnants of that building is. So, it's just basically, something's already been there. It's a restructure. Margaret threw in a little bridge in case we ever want to come to this side of the river. But then again, that's just aesthetics. Next one, Pat. Again, this is just what the river looks like, the bridge at that point in time, and what's there right now. It's just a wooded area, rundown. All those maples are invasive species, so we won't be hurting anything if we take them down, some of them, just to create a trail and create some spaces for benches. Last one, Pat. This is from Rebecca, the Historical Society. That's what was there. There was a big stone building there on B Street and Mechanic Street. That's Main Street with the river. That was pretty well industrial developed at that time, many, many years ago, in the 1800s. Next, last one, Pat, I believe. Nope. That's the pictures of what was there. And you can see B Street and Mechanic Street. We know what that intersection looks right now. That'd be taken from a vantage point of Soldier Field, which is not there at that point in time. But I believe that was a blacksmith's shot. And now the last one, Pat. And we're at this point. This is just an idea, a concept. Depending on where you want to go with this, we can take it. So, the next steps, I know CMRPC approached this week. This week, they're doing a Mass Works grant, submitting it tomorrow night for five towns. They picked us as one of the towns for downtown revitalization, so we should be having a study going on pretty soon. Part of that study is a Riverwalk, so it's kind of almost perfect timing for this right now.
We don't have any ARPA money.
Zero.
That's what's spent three times over.
Yeah. It'll be spent on the street right in front of us here pretty soon.
See, I get confused between Blackstone and Millville. One of them has a nice...
They all do. Manchog has one, Blackstone, Millville, they have another one. They've got the one with the three bridges. All these towns have some, something. We have nothing.
No, we don't, do we? And that's a, that rivers can be entertaining, the water flows.
It could be.
Yeah.
I mean, this will just be phase one right now, depending on what the study finds, whether you want to go phase two, phase three. If you put me in charge, I'll connect it to Putnam, Danielson, maybe New Hampshire.
And predominantly, as you said, the walking path at this point?
Just a circular, a closed loop.
How long?
It's not long, probably not even the length of a football field. How long is B Street? It would be that long.
That's it.
You'd go from Mechanic, minus the parking lot from Mechanic, to Cook.
All on one side of the river.
All on one side of the river. That is correct. For now, it's a starting point.
Yeah. No, I...
Next one, Rick.
You know, there's a lot of work to be done. Funding, who's going to do the work, gaining access to the property. I mean, there's a lot of work ahead of us. This is just a concept we're running by you right now. Matt thought we should run it by you guys first before we approach planning board, CONCOM, or even form a committee to do this.
Probably see where the grant goes from, goes to...
CMRCPC, yeah.
They give you some seed money so you can actually...
I think they're going to be designing right now. We got John Chabino looking on different grants, maybe to construct this.
Yeah, usually there's some of the state stuff for grants for the Riverwalk. It's like a special line item, as well as, you know, there's conservation money that comes in for local conservation and stuff like that, so you can repurpose it from there. And if you put the historical aspect of the land related to the Douglas Axemen, you know, might open up to some historical grants, because that's where the old Axemen mill was and stuff. So, there's opportunity there.
Be a walking trail with the plexiglass slides on it, where you walk and you read.
The Hunt Foundation.
Maybe we get a light tower, like...
Founded Alcoa Aluminum.
Little one.
And we approached them years ago, and I don't know where it was for even, but we got turned out, but that's another potential source, you know. It could be named after Hunt. He went on MIT, and then he founded Alcoa.
Yeah. Oh, could it not?
We may even have possible donations or, you know...
Fundraising efforts.
Local businesses fundraising.
Yeah.
You volunteers that would be willing to help with labor.
I think...
Who maintains this after it's built?
The highway.
It'd have to be the highway.
Yeah.
Like all the other parks.
Yeah.
Like the gazebo. It would just be another...
Lawn cutting and whatever. It depends on what you make the trail out of. If it's out of stone dust and the...
I don't know if it was volunteers or if you were designated, the highway department.
I think the first step is just getting site control.
Mm-hmm.
You know?
The only concern I have, Bob, would be your bandwidth as to, I know once you get into something, you go full bore, and I don't want to hinder that. But there's enough volunteers in town to offset the workload.
I think so. You could even, there's, the EDC might be resurrective. We can get some members. I mean, that could be a pet project for them, too.
Yeah. I think that might be a good idea, you know, give people an opportunity.
That'd be a perfect project for them, because it would be economic development.
Cool. Can you send us those slides?
You have?
Yeah, it's not...
No, it's not.
It's electronic.
All right, electronic back, okay.
Was a lot of color to print.
Yeah, it had 13 pages, and I was reminded of the cartridge cost.
The car, yeah.
Who reminded you of that?
I have no idea.
Yeah. It's not getting cheaper.
Yeah, saving the town money.
But I can send it to you separately if you're not...
Okay.
You put it on the SharePoint as well.
Municipal Light Plant Discussion. I think I...
That's an ongoing thing right now. I just talked to a consultant last week. He sent me a full page of links, and I am buried with links right now. So, I'm gathering information. There's a lot of information out there. So, I've been briefing Matt daily on it. We've been, I think he's trying to get to it, but he just doesn't have time. So, that's what I'll be doing tonight.
Okay.
Just digging into the weeds of the municipal light. It's not a simple project.
No.
And at some point in time, we do want to meet with that company, Epsilon, and just have them come in. They've already sat here once with us, not on the municipal, but on the data center aspect of it. So, we can get their attorneys down, just for presentation, see what it's going to cost, where it would take us, what are our options. So, that's where we're at right now. Nothing really to report, other than we're still investigating.
Okay. Cool. You want to go home before it gets dark?
I don't know if I can.
Yeah, you can.
I've never left this early.
Yeah. You are hereby ordered. No, thanks for bringing that forward and for the Master Plan Committee for getting behind it.
So, we just see where the Master Plan Committee wants to take this. And we know what the town wants, if we can do it.
Yeah, it was an overwhelming response for, you know, in the survey.
Very positive.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, I'm fine with going before planning, when you're ready.
Just a presentation, probably. Just let them know what might be coming down the road.
Yeah. Cool.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So, that covers the nine and 10.
Thirteen.
Well, yeah, let's do annual appointments, possible votes. I don't know if we're in that position yet, but in our packet is Lisa's hard work in color coding.
This is what I had to save my color.
I was just going to say. I tell my kids it's best not to point out my hypocrisy. But here we have, green is people that would like to continue. Yellow is we're still waiting to hear. Red is seeking not reappointment.
Well, that was discussed for Land Council.
Oh, yeah.
So, it's kind of marked as...
That's the only one that's red.
So, I would call that pending.
Pending. Use that word, yes.
Yeah. And then, highlighter yellow is the discussion that we, as a board, need to have regarding our role with CMRPC.
I think that would be your possible votes.
That particular one?
Yeah.
All right?
Yep.
You could probably do all the ones that are ready. We don't know what the status of that is, so we want to approve everything but the beige ones.
Matthew?
You can hold off on, until the next meeting, for all of them. I just, the Selectmen, the CMRPC ones for you guys, you do need to do tonight.
And how many, call them dark yellows, there's a fair amount of dark yellows. So, why don't we hold off until the next meeting to do them and swoop, unless there's a particular issue with the board member of any sort of committee. I'm very pleased with the level of professionalism and volunteerism that our committees demonstrate. So, let's move to the CMRPC piece. Ross, you are the delegate, and Les, you are the alternate for this particular role.
I don't have another dogfight over that this year.
Unfortunately, everyone's here, so...
Can't stick it up.
Yeah.
Unless there was opposition, I would make a recommendation to keep it as is. It may make sense with the CMRPC where Ross is on the master plan.
Second. Made by Mike, seconded by Hal. Any further discussion? You gentlemen accept?
Absolutely. Sure.
All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And again, we will hold off on the larger appointment action till our next meeting. Matt, we bounced around a little bit. I'm going to take it back to item number five, the reorganization, and ask you to take it from here.
Do you want to get in front of a microphone? I did a lot of blabbering at FinCom just now. I only have so many bullets, you know. I'm like Chapman, right?
Yeah.
Stuff's get a little squirrely after about 20.
You relied too heavy on that fastball.
I would give a lot of my treasure to throw a ball 102 miles an hour just once in my life. I know exactly what I'd throw it at. So, the question presented is the reorganization of the board, and the floor is open for nominations.
Nominate Tim to stay as chairman.
Are there any other nominations?
Thank you, Mike. Can I interject? Can I?
If you wish to give a speech.
Yeah. So, I had been thinking about this, and thank you, Mike, for the support. I think for the health of the town, recognizing that while I was just re-elected, that I'm not going to do this forever. I don't mind serving in a leadership capacity, but the chairmanship, I think, probably should go to someone else who may take the ball and run with it. And, you know, obviously, I'd be glad to work with any of them or anyone. But that's kind of where I'm at with it.
You want to do one more inning, or you want to go to the bullpen?
Yeah, I think I want to go to the bullpen, to be honest. And, I mean, I have my particular thought, and that would be for you, Les, to step forward and give it a shot as someone who's been elected by the townspeople twice. And in my eyes, you've demonstrated a willingness to get into it and to learn and lean into the issues. So, I would make a motion for Les.
Second.
We don't need a second. Are there any other nominations?
Well, with Tim saying what he was saying, I was going back to our other full-time pitcher, which would have been Mike. I liked the way he handled. So, I would nominate Mike.
Are there any other nominations? Parliamentarily, this is a trivial question, trivia question from me. An individual has been nominated, declined to serve, but the individual making the nomination has not withdrawn it. So...
So, I would withdraw my nominations in lieu of what was expressed by the chairman. Does that make it correct?
I think, yeah, that's the cleanest.
Okay.
Yeah, most effective way to do it. Because otherwise, you'd have to vote, and if he won, he'd have to decline.
Right.
Position, I think. So, there are two candidates, and I think what we can do is a roll call vote. You can, each member can announce their preference, rather than vote on one at a time. So, I'm going to go in alphabetical order. Mr. Bonin?
Stevens.
Mr. Davis?
Stevens.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Fitzpatrick.
Mr. Smith?
Fitzpatrick.
Mr. Stevens?
Stevens.
So, it appears that Mr. Stevens has three votes, which is the majority. You have the chair, Mr. Chairman.
Come on up.
What was the famous political saying? If nominated, they will not accept. If elected, they will not serve. Presidential level.
I'll find out. I think it was a general, and I think it was George Washington.
Yeah, he's got a swat.
Was it George? Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Hold on.
Yeah. He told you to come up, and then he fell asleep.
Give him the royal scepter.
Oh, wait a minute. Lyndon B. Johnson?
Johnson.
Lyndon B. Johnson?
Yeah, that's when he was in 68, 68. McCarthy kicked the crap out of him in New Hampshire.
Okay. Okay.
Now, he bites.
Yep. So next item.
He was not the first to say it. Pardon me. We're on the trivial person. We're looking for the Green Pie piece of her history. First person to say it, and I should know this because I read his memoir, and I thought it was fantastic, General William becomes a Sherman.
Tom Sherman, yeah.
It's called a Sherman-esque state. LBJ, of all people, to quote Sherman.
Yeah.
So we'll open up nominations for vice chairman.
Nominate Mike Fitzpatrick.
Aye, decline.
Okay. I'll nominate Tim Bowman. If you want to accept it. Any other nominations?
I'll nominate him.
Okay. All right. Seeing none, call for a vote. All in favor of Tim?
Yep.
All right.
The rotating seats.
Yep. Just rotating seats. Musical chairs tonight. Perfect.
If you're going to sit here, you have to bring.
I know.
I'll need a screen, so this will be the only night I sit here.
Able to throw. All right. So the next item on the agenda is to review the MOU, request for the Douglas Police Officer Association. Possible votes.
So this language in this proposed MOU, apparently this is on, hello, clarifies our collective bargaining agreement, definition of details and minimum detail pay. And hopefully had a chance to review it. 3211 is a clarification of what a town detail means. Then 3217 is a minimum for the hours requested, as described by the contract, and that language is clarified there, too. So there's no objection to this, either from the chief or from me. This is very much in the spirit of what we have negotiated with this union for years in a row, and it just clarifies things so that there's fewer misunderstandings about town details versus private.
Cleaner process. Okay.
Will this increase the number of local DPD detail, do you think?
I don't think so. So where are we? So on 3211 is the definition of a town detail, which, as you may know, is paid at a different rate than for-profit commercial. So, for instance, I think one of the things we're trying to clarify is that if a company is installing water main in the road as part of a project to improve the water main, that is a private detail. Detail is provided to the contractor doing the work on a private job. They have a contract with the town, but it's a private contractor doing the work. So these other things in this list, a water main break, which we typically would fix ourselves, water testing, pothole repairs, bridge repairs, tree removal done on behalf of the town by somebody, those are, or tree removed done by highway if there's a fall during a snowstorm, and we have a detail out there to make trips. Those are town details with a little bit.
Okay.
And I think it was that latter, the example I just used, that led to this having to be clarified.
Okay.
So is this change of language to the existing contract?
I think it clarifies it. So it takes away a run on what exactly, where are we going to draw the line on what a town detail is versus a private.
The reason I ask is, an MOU is a understanding, and it's usually not legally binding. So MOA being an agreement.
So in the labor context, understanding that in between meetings of town meeting or during the duration of a contract, we don't have the opportunity to go to town meeting to ratify language.
Okay.
Statute contemplates that. The select board would be able to make these minor modifications.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions? If not, entertain a motion to approve. Is what you're looking for, Matt?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve the MOU request for Douglas Police Officers Association as presented.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Ross, seconded by Tim. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Next item on the agenda, item eight, Matt.
So this is our intermunicipal agreement with the Blackstone Valley Veteran Services District. The towns of Uxbridge, Northbridge, Douglas, Sutton, and Millbury share the costs of providing administration for veterans' benefits. And many of these towns, actually, all four of the other towns, have a town manager form, so they can sign it and bind their community. I cannot. You have to. This arrangement has worked very well for us.
Yeah.
I think we're very happy with the services delivered. The staff there is responsive and capable. So we very much want to stay in the district. And as noted during the budget discussion, the amount of benefits being administered just keeps going down because unfortunately, the generations that fought for us are passing as they get older. So there are fewer people in the role than passed.
Yeah, I'm in favor always when we can do mutual agreements with neighboring communities and stuff like that. Is there a set for the veteran services? Because I know in the past, we had it over a partnership with Webster long ago. Is there, do they hold office hours, like, once a month in Douglas and stuff like that, or?
So they have a staff person who, I believe, is seated at Uxbridge Town Hall. They are, for purposes of budget, in the Uxbridge Town Budget.
Yeah.
So they get Uxbridge benefits, and they have the Uxbridge pay scale. So I believe by contacting the number provided in Uxbridge Town Hall for veteran services.
All right. It would be the same number that we're going to have on our website for veterans and stuff like that?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Excellent. Okay. Any other questions from the board?
So the motion would be to authorize me.
Yep.
Make a motion to authorize the town administrator to sign the IMA for veteran services for fiscal year '26 all the way through '28.
All right. Motion by Tim, seconded by Hal. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We already did number nine and 10, so we are on to number 11, review of the RFP for Levin Gleason Court.
So Building Facilities Committee put off its action. I would recommend you do that until you get their recommendation.
Okay.
I think they're going to vote on that in June.
Okay. At their June meeting. All right.
What was the reason for that? Just wasn't, was it ready?
I think they want one last go-around with the historic commission, the way the language is in the RFP, to safeguard the appearance of the building. I think it does the trick.
Yeah. Yeah, I think there's an opportunity, whoever moves forward with the building, for historical grants in similar communities. And, you know what I mean, they've got large grants from the state, so they could be available for someone's opportunity where they decide. So, okay. Number 12, moving forward, review the RFP for land council.
So if this was not in your packet until today, this was circulated around. Frankly, I wasn't exactly sure of what success I would achieve or not achieve just cold calling land council firms around the Commonwealth to see if there was interest in working with us. So as of today, we have three that would like to be interviewed. This is an appointment, not a procurement. So the select board really has more or less completely unfettered control over this decision. So to lend some discipline to it, I wrote the memo today suggesting a process. So I would ask the board tonight for a vote on two issues, although you may decide to punt on one, that's fine. But the first issue I'd like you to vote on is the process. So we envisioned that those staff members who work most closely with Land Use Council, so the building commissioner, who's also a zoning enforcement officer, and our new community development director, along with the town administrator, would conduct screening interviews to round out some of the depth of those firms that have sent us, two things, a firm resume, so a summary of their staff and their qualifications, and their recent history of cases or clients represented. And inquire into those things as staff people in our day-to-day responsibilities, getting at our pain points. And then we would just write up an evaluation of each candidate firm to be included in the packet that would come to the select board. Then the select board could either interview all of the candidates or narrow it down to finalists, if that's your preference. But you would have all the feedback from staff to rely upon to guide your decision whether to go forward or not. So if that process sounds right, then just back of the envelope, calendaring, we could probably interview everybody by the end of June, which means that on July 1st, you could decide, it could be posted for July 1st, so you could have a conversation amongst the board to determine who you wanted to interview, and you could start your interviews on the 15th of July. I would really like to have council in place or secure it by September 1st, so that we don't have a long transition. If your decision on question number two here goes one way or the other, I'm sure the incumbent would stay and service us, but they may not continue to have the same pricing.
Yeah.
I just got to put that out there. There's a possibility. So that is question number two, is whether you want to treat this the way we treated Maya, and by default, have the incumbent participating in the process if they're interested in staying, or do you want to rip the Band-Aid and go ahead and sever the relationship and just start fresh? This is your appointment, so I'm not going to get overly involved in policy discussion. I will tell you that it might just be cleaner to rip the Band-Aid off. I'm thinking that there are, and Selectman Davis can help me out here, but under the legal canons, a transition of this kind has to be done professionally and responsibly. So notice has to be provided to the incumbent attorney representing you. They have to prepare the case files. They have to get it all categorized and transfer it over to new council. So it's not an instantaneous, you know, one day you wake up and it's a different attorney representing you in court. There's some decisions that get made between the attorneys and who might finish a piece of work if it's almost done, but all new work would certainly go to, under appointment. I think that's a little bit cleaner way to go. I think, once you reach the point where you think you want to try to make a change, that is evidence enough that you need to. I think we've reached the point. And it's not a reflection on the personalities or the accomplishments of the people we've been working with, because I think they've served the town of Douglas very well admirably. But as the town grows and our needs become more sophisticated, we really need somebody to be on the spot and perhaps more firm in the determinations of what we need to pursue for enforcement action, and more resolute in the advice that they give our boards. I think the extent that you witness planning board, Concom, or other meetings where conversation might be slightly undisciplined, it's the result of 20 years, almost 20 years of having the same attorney. And the guidance isn't there. And so I think if that's your diagnosis and that is mine, it is time to move forward.
I have a question and an opinion. So is their appointment a month-to-month thing? Is it yearly thing? Because you're talking about going past the July 1st deadline.
So your appointment is a yearly appointment.
Yeah.
But it is also a business transaction. So we could, because we had so many things in front of the board up until July 1st, negotiate with the incumbent to stay on on a month-to-month basis, and just hold over the appointment. But they will have been given notice that they're not going to be agreeable.
So the opinion is, I brought this to Matt's attention because of the inconsistencies of the service that we get on, there's only one law that I participate in, and you do as well, as of late. It's problematic. And I don't think it was being served properly, for whatever reason. I don't know what they are. It's up and down too much, and it's more down than it is up. So for that reason, I spoke with the town administrator about this. And I think it's time to, as you put it in the insurance thing, jumping from iceberg to iceberg, we got to tell me that we got fat on top of one, and it's time to look at the next one.
Yeah, I think, I think in the last six months, we've seen just a decline in services and stuff like that in response, and some things. So I think.
That's me in general.
Well, I'm trying to be over the edge, but no, I think.
There was a change in the attorney that was working most closely with us.
Yeah.
And there was a very noticeable decline in the levels of.
Yeah. And I think you also highlighted an important thing. As our town grows, I think also our boards need that support there in place, you know, and attendance. And so, okay.
Can that be a key piece to this RFP, attendance at board meetings?
Yeah. So that's, again, this is your bailiwick. This is your recommendation from your staff is that absolutely. And with video conferencing capabilities what they are now, right, some of the boards, if they have a relatively routine agenda, might only need a Zoom appearance for 15, 20 minutes. So rather than billing us for the whole trip out here, the meeting and the whole trip back, just sign on, give a couple pieces of advice, go away. But we have some meetings that'll go two, three hours, and a lot of opinions being shared about controversial matters. And not having council there at any given time, I think we've all watched one of these meetings where somebody will say, well, we can't make this decision tonight because we need to ask council what they think of such and such. So then the applicant waits another two weeks or another month, and staff work gets bogged down because now we're chasing the attorney to get an answer. I think we just got to start to.
There's also been situations where the applicant shows up with an attorney, and we're sitting here.
Unrepresented.
Yeah.
Unrepresented in making decisions that we really shouldn't be making. And the applicant's paying for two meetings for the council.
Yeah. I don't think that's fair to any board. You know what I mean?
Isn't it a pro-business attitude?
Land use in Massachusetts is complex.
Yeah.
So if the applicant has an attorney and the town does not, and it's one of those complex issues, you talk right over everybody's head. People will miss the ceiling points.
Any other comments from the board? If not, entertain a motion to authorize Matt to move forward with the RFP for land council, as he's outlined.
Yeah, I would make the motion and just add to what you had just said, to allow, to authorize the town administrator to move forward with this RFP, but also note that, as suggested in the RFP, the staff will interview all interested firms and score them with factors that matter to us, such as quality of the attorney that will work with those availability to attend meetings over our approach to regulations and enforcement. The staff will conduct some background checks and references as well. All rankings notes will be submitted to the board no later than June 24th. The board will choose which firm will be interviewed as early as July 1st meeting, conduct interviews starting on July 15th. The board can deliberate as the season fit and make the appointments hopefully by the beginning of September.
Motion by Mike.
You adding something, Tim?
Well, just a question, does that include the opportunity for the incumbent?
If you want my opinion, I think it's time to move on. But if the majority wants to have the incumbent come in.
It's two separate motions.
Okay.
We've had, if you entertain this comment, we've had multiple conversations and opportunity with them. The displeasure in service has been expressed to that firm and different members of that. firm, from myself through zoning, after the meetings, not on camera, don't want to embarrass anybody. But nothing's changed, so my thought is just to, as Matt put it, rip the Band-Aid off and move on.
But they could submit, they could submit an application.
If they want to submit an application, but...
How long have they been with us? Well, let's do the motions on the table.
Yeah, the motion there.
I'll second Mike's motion.
All right, motion by Mike, second by Tim, on favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Then...
Second item...
The second question, under that discussion point, is whether or not to inform the incumbent whether or not they'll be asked to apply. There's been discussion about figuratively ripping the Band-Aid off, and then Tim asked how long have they worked with us? And I won't know the answer to that question, I'm thinking Selectman Bonin should.
Before me.
Because I think, right? I think that the named partner at our current firm was a partner, or certainly close to being a partner, at KP Law. When he left with others to start his own firm, and I think Douglas stuck with him during that transition, so I'm thinking it's got to be at least 20 years.
Yeah, 11.
He's been there 12 years, he's been on zoning.
Well, that's all I've ever worked with, and I've been here for eight, so...
So, just incognizant of that, and recognizing Mike's concern, I would encourage any and all folks to pursue their RFP in business in Douglas. You know, Mike's one person, right? And we owe it to him, I think, to challenge him on the performance, obviously take Mike's concerns with that, you know, very seriously, and who knows where the chips fall, but my hunch is, the decent thing to do is to invite any and all.
We do Zoom calls for the interviews? Mike speed things up? Or you want to shake the fluff?
I'd rather see him in person.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's important, in person.
It won't be terribly long, I can't imagine. We can limit it.
I can screen the Zoom calls, but when they want to work for you, they should come here and talk to you.
Yeah. You know, I just wonder what the, again, if you've got three interested parties in, you know, possibly four with the, you know, current land use and stuff like that, you know, where we, you know, we get to a final two. You know, I went through and talked to staff just about getting decisions back in a timely manner, Planning Board, you know, having legal counsel available for them, as well as, you know, I've seen the interactions with, you know, on the ZBA over the last several months, and I think, you know, I think we've experienced some issues and concerns. So, I think it's different than the Maya situation and that, because we know what we currently are getting, and then it's, you know, it's, in my opinion, that it's not in the right direction from services, for the services we need for the town. So, I'm okay with looking at a fresh phase, a fresh start, so, but it's up to the bottom in line with, just for that standpoint.
I can add a little bit to that, which, because the other members aren't aware of this, zoning, it's very consistent that we won't get a decision back until the next meeting, right? Even basic ones, some of them are really simple to do, and it's taken four or five weeks sometimes. One of the recent ones, staff in this building was getting harassed by the applicant over the fact that they didn't have their decision back yet. It's not the staff's fault, it's the job of land council to provide that for us, so we have a good decision that we, that'll hold up, right? If the applicant's not getting back, we're not serving the town well just by the fact that they're spending all this money, they're trying to get their project done. After they get their decision, we have to review it, we have to sign it, then we have to give it to them, and then it gets stamped in. We give it to them, they got to wait another 20 days. This is like dragging it out for a very long period of time. I think we can be much more efficient than that. They know what our concerns have been, this is, Les was extremely generous with saying that it was six months, it's been going on for, I would say, a couple of years. It's just got to the point where it's almost unbearable at this point. And I expressed my frustrations to the town administrator, and we went in this direction.
I think we've come to this point, and they've been addressed to make corrections, and it hasn't been happened, hasn't happened. It sounds to me like they've arrived at their bus stop, honestly.
Yeah. I could just add, I know, having the experience of going into other communities and going before boards over the course of my career, the response of decisions is important, the timeline of that, and the, you know, reasonable time, some, you know, in a community that has good land council or reviews and stuff like that, it's within five days. When we're talking five weeks plus, you know, it's painful for...
It's costing everybody.
It's costing everybody, so, but...
And this is in a personality that I actually like, everybody that's in that firm, including the owner of the firm, or the principals of the firm, but business is business, and that's what I'm looking at.
Hal, any comments?
I agree. That's the, you know, gives off and gives a bad reputation to the town if it's slow action on things that should be sped up.
So, Matt, you want a motion for authorization to move forward with...
Well, they're welcome to apply, if that's what they want to apply.
Well, except, not to be misunderstood, it's not an RFP.
Okay.
So, I'm not making a public invitation.
Yeah, okay.
I'm approaching firms that have the necessary qualifications.
Fair enough.
So, does the Board want to direct me to ask me, tell them to reapply or not?
Well, if you don't want to entertain my opinion, again, to go on the side of caution and kind of agree somewhat with Tim, I guess, is a compromise here, is to notify them that we are going to entertain council, and if they choose to reapply, then they can reapply. And if they ask you why you're going in that direction, I guess you have enough information that you can be very candid with them. I expect that.
They might say, "We brought somebody newer to the firm that's going to be..."
They may be at a point where they're going in a different direction, every company does it.
Yeah.
Maybe they found their hole in their boat, who knows?
Yeah.
All right.
I think that's a good approach, what you said, if you want to...
I'm seeing consensus.
Yeah, consensus, the vote, you're good.
We need a vote.
Okay.
So, I want to read it back, notify the firm that we are looking, if they want to reapply, they can.
Yeah.
Fair enough.
I agree with that.
Okay, thank you.
And if they ask why, then you can easily handle that. No, but you can easily handle that, if you ask why.
All right. Moving forward, we've already cut through numbers 13 and 14. All right, number 15.
So, as the Board will recall, we moved the executive assistant to the Select Board and the town administrator to a contract position, which is allowed under our state statute, three years ago. And came up with an employment agreement, and one of the primary purposes of having an employment agreement is to be able to depart from the compensation table and put the position in a different standing. Lisa and I were very informal about the renewal process. I think we should be on our way out on a Friday, "Hey, I think I want to stay," and then on a Friday, "I think we want to keep you." But we did meet the deadlines, and this contract expires July 1st, so it's coming pretty close to the end, but we made no language changes. And we did a salary review, looking at where we positioned Lisa in terms of not only her peer group, her experience within the peer group. So, the idea is to keep moving this position to reflect Lisa's long tenure with the Town of Douglas, and what she brings to the table as a result of that experience. She would not be in the bottom third in this comparison, she should be closer to the middle, slightly above average. It is a, it's a algebra two problem to calculate the year three salary.
Year two and three.
So, basically, the goal is to not have this position wedded to the comp table, and to have the Select Board and the administrator just negotiate this as a free form. However, the Management One Grade Step 10 was a level of salary that we want to, I want to achieve here, because I think it would accelerate. By your year six, you will have been in the role for six years, but I want her to be at Step 10 at the end of the six years. So, that's the trajectory we're on. But since Town Meeting won't approve the M1 Step 10 salary level until that year, we're going to do some math to get there. So, we set the salary for this year easily enough, then we look to year two is basically this year's salary plus the M1 Step 10 salary for next year, as approved by Town Meeting, divided by two. So, you see what I'm doing, is trying to get to that step. And then, in year three, it'll be simple, whatever Town Meeting approves for M1 Step 10, that'll be the salary for the position.
Not to go down.
Well, that just screwed down.
Any other comments? If not, we can entertain them.
Just want to acknowledge Lisa's efforts and professionalism in the job.
Absolutely.
I think she's a valuable part of the team, yeah.
She's done a great job, and she promises to keep her voice in shape to lead the pledge.
Yep.
We lost her.
Don't worry.
Yeah, but it's, you've been in the job, what, four years now?
Yeah.
And you would think that she's been here for 20. You've put a lot of work into it, and you're very on top of what needs to be done, you keep us in line, which is a challenge in its own, but you do a good job.
Knows the lay of the land and the people involved.
Yeah. Should have buy his candy, and that's okay.
I'd probably...
She may now.
Yeah. I would probably further say that I think when you're out, you're sorely missed, it was a missing gear in the gears of the town, and very noticeable, so...
I feel obligated to say something, Lisa? And I would just say, I think you know how highly I view you and the services that you provide this Board to Matt and to the townspeople, so I'm more than happy to ratify that contract.
Thank you.
There are only two years left.
Lisa, I very appreciate...
I already said it.
You already said it. Very good, very good. Good deal.
Now, it's not an easy job, and you...
No, no, it's not, definitely.
Lot to it.
Especially being on the front lines, it's not, so...
Definitely the front line.
All right. We can entertain a motion to ratify a contract for Lisa Freeman for fiscal year '26 to '28.
So, move.
Second.
All right, motion by Mike, second by Tim, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Next is minutes, well, for May 20th.
The only thing I noticed in this is that there was no mention of cake and ice cream.
Yeah, he tried to get it out of us last meeting.
Yeah. Yes, and thank you for not including where I was, for being excused. It was really not a great time to be in Atlantic City for the first time, discovering why I'll never be back at Atlantic City.
I don't want to be typo police, but Gleason Court, I believe, in item number 14.
Ah, nice catch.
With that, I'd make a motion to accept the minutes of May 20 with that amendment.
Second. Okay, motion by Tim, second by Ross, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, next up, on number 17, town administrator, goals and town goals, discussion we...
This appears to just be on the agenda every...
I'm going to own that one, I think we've put...
Goals are being determined by default, right? So, I mean, that's kind of where we're going.
I would, yeah, I think I probably put that on in the hopes that we would further that discussion, and since it does say possible votes, I would actually like to put it on paper that this Board supports Matt finding a way to get rid of that brown building on Main Street, 16.
Do handle, huh?
I'm writing it down.
Yeah. I think it's a long time overdue.
On the capital process, capital list, so find us some more money.
It's always the goal. Yeah, and I think, you know, now we have a town planner and stuff like that, so I think it's, we're always moving forward with grants and stuff like that, so I think it's a good thing.
And honestly, it might be low-lying for what, some action out of Boston, it might be, my understanding, an easy goal, but a goal nonetheless, from my perspective, because I need a full Board support.
To set my goals, you need to speak as a body.
Okay, yeah. No, I'm in favor of getting rid of the brown house, I think the community, it's long overdue, so I think that's...
Again, you're going to have to figure out where the funding comes from.
Yeah.
But I think, just to add to this, I think we should come up with some goals for the town administrator, we typically do that around June or July anyways, correct? To help him so he understands what we're thinking that he may want, so we can try to think about that over the next couple of meetings, to give him something, otherwise he's going to fly on his own. So, we have a problem doing that, but I think he's looking for some...
I don't think we ever took a vote on AI, did we?
No, but I'll bring up current event, right? So, there's been a lot of attention recently, I follow these ridiculously arcane stories. In the city of Newport, which has a city manager, a city council, former governor, the city council didn't inform the city manager of what its budget goals were. His brand-new city manager, before that was a Navy man, came in with a budget that he thought was an adequate balance, and sat there for two hours while his city council roasted him alive, and then voted against his budget. And he just kind of sat there and said, "Well, if that's what you wanted in the budget, you needed to tell me what your priorities were."
Yeah.
Because, other than that, I have to break the Open Meetings Act and try to poll you each one at a time, which, as a new city manager, you didn't have a chance to do. So, they rejected $144 million budget, and you had to start all over again. And then the second meeting, they passed a budget, but over his, basically over his corpse publicly. So, that's what we're trying to avoid.
Yep.
When you set goals, I follow your goals, and so they were at least at the same page. And maybe we're disappointed that we didn't reach something, but you would be informed as to the efforts made to reach to it, so you know that you weren't being ignored. That's the critical part of communication between the town administrator and the state.
So, I think in the next couple of meetings, we should review goals and come up with things that, you know, give my guidance of what we're looking for for the community.
We can each jot down a couple of things, and maybe we can put a...
Consolidated list and stuff like that.
There's probably a consensus on what we're doing, but it's good to nail them down.
Right, I think it helps.
Yeah, but if we each jot down our thoughts on a piece of paper and...
Yeah.
Some of the things that are extremely important are economic development. It's as important to know what you don't want to see as it is to know what you aspire to see.
True.
Because that doesn't guide just my work, it guides Bob Manerick's work, so that we're all on the same page. So, if you say no to a whole category of businesses that you really don't want to attract here, and then he'll focus his effort on the ones you do want, then we're much more likely to get them than just trade, take whoever is first in line at Deli and whatever they order.
Okay.
That's very important for that. And then, I think that ties into the municipal light discussion, so we've been, we've been efforting against your existing set of goals. I think we've... I think we've made progress against quite a few of them. The other issue I think that's going to be very important for communication between all of us heading into fiscal '27 is your budget priorities. Now, we don't have a complicated budget. We don't often have alternatives, you know, column one on the menu, column two on the menu, it just doesn't work out that way. By the time we finish taking into account the staff and their progress on the comp table, we don't have a whole heck of a lot of money for expenses on the municipal side. But part of this conversation is going to go to, you know, we're cooperating very well with schools, and yet that is where a lot of the budget pressure is coming from. So what course this board wants to take as we go into fiscal '27 budget planning and holding to the commitments that I have made informally to the superintendent or not is going to be a really important point for you. Because as I've said, we're really hoping that a whole bunch of things break our way. Because the number that is sitting in the budget forecast right now isn't going to be something I can fix without making cuts. So really hoping everything breaks our way. We had a couple of breaks this week that were positive.
You know, just since you brought up FID 27, I think it's probably also worthwhile to, you know, almost do some type of workshop with them and one of their leads from the school committee, so they're informed and there's no, you know, the awareness is out there from their board side that can be shared and stuff like that, and the challenges that need to be faced, and some of the stuff that's kind of catch them up to speed and keep that rolling, I think that could be helpful. So we'll keep the goals on here for discussions, we can move forward from there.
I don't want to be a rabble-rouser here from my side seat, but the opportunity right now, gentlemen, is to put the brown building on his goals list. I would make a motion that we put the brown building and beautify Town Common further.
Second.
Okay, I got a motion from Tim, a second from Hal. Any other further discussion?
Yeah, how do you, we just talked about a challenging '27 budget.
Yeah. I'm not proposing how we're going to fund it right now, other than to put it on a priority.
Priority, and yeah.
It is, yeah.
You know.
There's ways.
I think it should be on the list, but I don't, I don't see it as a high priority at the moment. There's, the town has got certainly other things we need to focus on. We can flood Matt with all types of goals and overwhelm him with everything, but I think we've got to stay focused also. But yes, let's roll on.
I don't want to dismiss your concerns there, I'll just point out that we currently have a building that has a hole in the roof. That was, when I voted for that thing in 2011, the deal was that that was going to be taken down. It's been plenty of time, so the motion's been made.
Yep, question's made. All right, make a roll call vote.
Roll call for what?
No, you can.
Yeah.
I'm just curious.
Just to be, so we're on the record for it, that's all. I mean, are you in favor of? All right, Ross.
Yeah, Smith, aye.
Smith, aye.
Steven, aye.
Steven's aye.
Bone, aye.
I'm going to abstain until I have more information as to what the plan is, because it doesn't just stop at taking the house. If you're going to try and tie it into the common, you brought that up, think through the whole process, you've got the parking lot, you've got a sidewalk, the people are going to be directed up to a sidewalk, to a crosswalk, over the crest of a hill that goes nowhere but to an intersection. So there's a lot of other costs that are going to be associated with that.
All right, so moving forward, line number 18, Town Administrator's report. Matt?
So, by way of warning, you're going to be a busy board, because we're entering a phase where a lot of our major plans are due for renewal. And only this board can promulgate those plans in a binding way. So the Emergency Management Plan of the Comprehensive Emergency Management, the SEMP, is one of the first things that will come your way. The deputy chief at the fire station has done good work to get a draft to me. I am about two-thirds of the way through it. I've made fairly aggressive use of my red pen. To disclose a bias, I'm not interested in theoretical plans or telling MEMA or anybody else what they want to hear in order to get it done. A plan has to reflect what we would actually do. And it may be less than comfortable to have that conversation, because instead of just checking the boxes and filling a well, we're going to have this hierarchy and so on, so on, so on, we're going to sit here. If you get to the point where you look at the EOC staff and say, wait a minute, you're going to take eight first responders or eight frontline staff, including a command-level staff person, and tie them up in this building, we won't have very many people left to actually staff the event. And if your EMD is one of your most highly qualified medics and command presence, they're going to be out there in incident command, they're not going to be at EOC. So whether we like it or not, we have to face the possibility that the traditional model needs to be modified to work for Douglas. And that's why I've always been willing to step up and do all the training and be ready for this, because a lot of what happens for logistical support is well within my skillset. But I can't give you CPR, let alone administer drugs, I'm just not qualified to do that stuff. So if push comes to shove, I'm going to take the uniformed person, I'm going to kick them out there and say, go drive some red thing or a blue thing, because let the bureaucrats sit here and figure out how you're going to get the shelter open and the heat on while you're out there saving lives. So that's what the plan needs to reflect, what we would actually do. Because what we did during COVID worked extremely well. I think we were the, one of the finest emergency responses across the Commonwealth, just right here in Douglas. And we did it by decentralizing, getting lots of voices around the table, lots of ideas, unified decision-making, and lots and lots of people were reassigned and given new tasks. And so we didn't waste any staff dollars. We didn't send people home or lay people off. We had them all come to the building, instead of doing their normal, everyday job, they were part of the pandemic response, reaching out to citizens, helping people get what they needed. And that's why it worked. And that's the, if that model works, if it ain't broke, we're not going to try to fix it. So there's these thematic decisions. So there's SEMP, then you'll have Hazmet will come through, which is hazard mitigation. Kind of a thin ice with the current administration, and Washington does not want to see certain terminology or certain themes that the Biden administration very much wanted to see. So we're going to talk about the same stuff, we're just going to call it something different so that we don't get knocked out of the box, because this isn't an exercise in political correctness. I've said this before, there isn't a Republican or Democrat way to fix a pothole.
Yep.
There's chances are a decent way, and a better way, and maybe even a best way to do it, and it's got nothing to do with ideology, it has to do with the practical issue of getting resources to the situation and then using the proper technique to apply the resources to address the need. And so with Hazmet, if you want to wax poetic about what's going on in the world and the climate and everything else, that's fine, because the problem we'll have is massive rainstorms and stormwater surges that are unusual weather patterns for our area. So no matter what you call it, our problem is getting the water off the street into a system so that it's not affecting people's property or endangering their lives by driving out of wet roads. So that's, that's the job, that's the responsibility. So we're trying to thread this needle and make sure we say things the way we need to to get the Hazmet plan approved. There will still be some funding opportunities tied to having an up-to-date Hazmet, so we've got to get to the point where we position the town to be competitive in the grant competitions that we have coming up by having all of our plans done. And then your master planning committee continues to make progress and coming up with different ideas. I don't know that that work's going to end anytime soon, but I'm thinking that a checkpoint with the select board is probably appropriate. So last but not least, it's the continuity of operations with the so-called COOP plan, and that's really focused on what we do here in Town Hall, if we have certain kinds of setbacks, how do we continue to provide services to people? We've started to have these conversations about internet outages and technology, you know, basically being hacked and broken, or power failures and other things that we have to do. So that's in the general sense. Detailed updates, the roadway project on Depot Street will visibly start next Monday. This has been, Matt, can you hear me back there with this silly?
I can, but I can also hear that.
All right, so I'm going to go a little bit closer, is that better? Because I can't hear myself.
It's a little loud, yeah.
So the bypass service will start to get run, and we'll see some erosion control measures being put out to start the project the week of June 17. This was a little bit of an acceleration. We expressed our displeasure today with the contractor and the engineer, should have given us more heads up. Because our goal is always to communicate to the neighborhood, make sure people understand, we're going to be running holes across the driveway and covering that with cold patch and tamping it down, it's going to be kind of inconvenient or ugly for a couple of months. And it's well worth it, but it's, that's what's going to start. Then as we get closer to actually using the materials here in the parking lot and positioning them in the project, this will be a work zone. So there'll be a couple of weeks where access to the basketball/pickleball court will be restricted, there won't be as much parking as usual, because you won't be able to get in the way of the pipe being moved by, I guess they're using minis, which I'm not real excited about, but. Yeah, yeah, don't get me started. Yeah, it might be dicey, they might have a bigger piece for that, but the digging in the, it's actually going to be done with minis, so I'm not real.
After hours, Matt, is that going to impact access to the?
No, I think it's going to be a standard workday, so 7:00 AM to 3:00 PM.
It's just summertime, I know a lot of kids like to play basketball, we want to keep them.
Like, in the late afternoon, you might still be able to get over here and use the stuff.
Yep, and they'll probably tape it off and stuff like that as they're moving pipe out, it's caution tapes. Okay. So it's, you said it starts next Monday, but then you mentioned June 17.
June 17, I think is when we're going to see them actually start and working in the street.
In the street, okay, all right.
We still, we don't want them in the street when there are school buses.
No, not at all.
That last day of school, the next day should be the first day they think about doing anything out here. All of this is weather dependent.
Oh, no, we have rain and everything else.
So for projects, that's going to be the most noticeable that we're starting. We are out to bid right now for the roofing project on the fire station, I've gotten a lot of inquiries from contractors. We sent out a targeted email via COMBIS to over 300 contractors that sign up for that kind of work, and we've advertised as required by law. So that opening is going to be June 28, correct? Or June 20?
Yeah.
I'm making sure I'm right. So residents may be noting that we have a temporary generator out here, the big piece of equipment under the linden tree, and that's necessitated by an equipment failure, electronic components have broken down in the main generator. There's an ongoing effort to determine how that happened, and to pursue some warranty relief from the manufacturer of the main generator, which we might be able to get for the transfer switch, we're not going to be able to get for other pieces of it. This all occurred on Sunday. Facilities manager came here and noticed that the heater block had tripped, so there was a red light. So when he reset it, the control display was dark, there was no signal to the control. So the control panel is gone.
Yep.
And then when they finally got it started, when they brought the portable to start that one up, there were other issues, another control. So we have two controllers.
Sorry, the correction, for that, it's the 30th.
30th. I thought it was.
No lightning.
28 days of advertising, so it's 30.
No lightning strikes involved. I had a new Generac, three weeks of storm hit, the lightning hit the motherboard, and that was the only thing that wasn't covered by the warranty.
But chances are you had evidence, right? You had some kind of carbon scoring, I mean, you looked at the generator and said, yeah, that got hit by lightning. That's not a valid theory to me with this one. There is absolutely no damage to our unit. I think it's a different issue.
I think we're fortunate to discover it, you know, when it's not, yeah, versus in a critical situation where you need it and it's non-operational, so, no, it's good.
So at FinCom, we just went over a transfer of funds to repair the boiler. I think I informed this board of this already. A second section of the boiler has leaked, and so it needs to be replaced. So we don't have a boiler in the building right now, so the generator's down, the boiler's down. Thank God it's 70 degrees out inside.
As long as the AC keeps working, I think.
Yeah, as long as that beast turns on.
Unlike some Town Halls where they still have fans in the aisles.
So that's most of what I wanted to cover by way of update that's not privileged for executive session, we got quite a bit to talk about there.
If I could just add a comment, Matt, of concern, I guess, with the track record we had on northeast Maine and Gilbo Street, where we're going to be pretty much doing the same thing up here on Depot Street, is there a way that we can really stay on top of this so we don't fall into that category? Again, not category, but I know it's hard to say, but I mean.
You talking about the paving?
I'm talking about everything.
The job.
Yeah, we had, we had.
Because the paving had to be.
We had drainage issues, we had driveway issues, we had paving issues, we had, and maybe we've learned from it, but I just want to make sure that we're just on top of it, that's all.
I, I realize people complained, I want to tell you that that was actually a relatively smooth project. From the contract administration point of view, when they put the improper mix down, they were called on it immediately and they repaved the road.
They made good work, I get it, yeah.
I think the winner winner chicken dinner is we will not have that contractor again. So we, we ended up fighting with them a lot around final payment and going back and forth over who was responsible for what.
Kill throughout again.
And they've been, they will never work here again. So they were disqualified from any further bids in Douglas, and I don't think they'll ever lift that. So this is a completely different contractor, very big company, so much bigger than Richardi Brothers, C. Norton is somebody you may have heard of or seen their equipment being dragged around on flatbeds. Not entirely thrilled with the approach, but I'm confident that this will be a pretty good dig, because there's pipe there already, and I'm hoping they didn't backfill with, you know, boulders and elephant skulls. I don't think they did, I think we're going to end up finding really good material, and if anything, the pipe may be disintegrated in spots, but the trenching won't be so hard. This is a reminder to people, we let the trench settle, we don't pave right away. So there is that bumpy sensation, because, you know, some of these roads are older, so to the extent we do any work in Martin Road, it's going to be a difficult thing. But if you pave too soon without letting that material compact, then you end up ruining your brand-new pavement job after a couple of years, because it all settles and caves in and breaks. So that's, we avoid that by compacting it very aggressively and then putting a proper trench patch, letting it settle through a full freeze thaw cycle.
Yep.
And that's, that's the inconvenience that people have to deal with, is that year, because it's in their best interest, $800,000 a mile for pavement jobs, we've got to make sure we don't.
Work the weight, so to speak, when it's done, right? That's all.
The rest I'm going to keep my powder dry for executive session.
Okay. All right, line 19, any open session items?
Again, just a comment, last meeting we made, I made a comment about flags flying at the high schools, and I know the next morning phone calls were made, and just wanted to say thank you to all involved that flags were flying by the weekend at all schools. As a resident, as a board member, I really appreciate that.
Yeah, I think that's important.
I agree with one, too.
No, no, I think, I think it's, you know, looking at our community, we have a lot of patriotic people in our properties and stuff like that. We look at a lot of other communities, you don't see that as much and stuff like that. So definitely on town property, and we should have proper flags, you know, flying for the country and stuff, so. All right.
Not done yet. Hal has something, and then I have something.
A constituent approached me about the suggestion box. If we could move it so somebody who is handicapped wouldn't have to get out of their car, they could just put it in the box if that's not a problem to do that. Seemed to make some sense.
The suggestion box or the drop-off box?
Drop-off box.
All right, because, because I think there's two boxes out there, and.
I don't know if both could be there, but just looking.
No, I just, you threw me off with the suggestion box. I was like, wait a second. That's not, no, it was outside, so. Maybe that's something that we could look at, something like that, so. Okay. Anything else, Hal? Anything else? That was it?
Yeah, that's it.
Move the box closer?
Yes. Mike? So as you may or may not be aware, that I foolishly volunteered for another committee. But anyways, the question for this board is, the animal regulation subcommittee is seeking an answer on whether or not it's going to be a regulation or a bylaw. And I had a brief conversation with town administrator so he can help me out through this process. He suggested that a bylaw would be, it would just identify, just an overview of it, and then a regulation would actually dive into what it would be. And coupled with that is potentially exploring the, creating a hearing officer locally. So then that way, if somebody has a complaint, they would have somebody, such as the town administrator, where he's trained in that sort of thing. To hear a complaint and try to be a mediator before it goes to Hertz Bridge or wherever, it goes after the fact. So just to give the residents another chance to be able to appeal a decision by the Board of Health, which that's where the animal control or animal inspector would fall under if there was an issue such as that. So what I'm looking for is some guidance whether or not this is a bylaw, a regulation, or whatever. So with that, I will yield to the administrator.
Where's the pressure coming to have an animal regulation or bylaw?
There is zero. And the town staff gets called on a regular basis. What can I have for animals? Don't know. So then if there's, if you're, if you're out of control with your animals and Ross complains about it, wait a minute, let me finish. And the animal control goes down there and, or animal inspector goes down there, they don't even have nothing for a guideline, so there's nothing that, that they can do. This has been a problem on a few different things. That's what's generated this. It's not somebody just came up with a bright idea to have an animal regulation. It's try to take the, the burden off the, on the Board of Health for the, for the sake that they can't give an answer, right? They need some guidance as to how to address these complaints. And permitting and, and creating more staff to chase complaints around isn't necessarily the answer.
How often has this come up that there's, I haven't heard of anything myself, doesn't mean.
Whether they don't put it in the paper or on Facebook.
People are calling it like, are they calling it like giraffes or, you know, something unusual?
Well, you've seen that on Facebook, right? So I, I'll use an absurd reference because obviously nobody's going to have a giraffe or a bison. I've used them both. So that way I can't be accused of picking on your animal, right? So I'll use that for an example, that you can't have eight giraffes. That's actually the number that I used, right? So then that get put on the Facebook, which, whatever, the same person that's complained, that's criticized it when it comes to the meetings, I ask them, you have any input? If you have input, it's a very open conversation. They try to be proactive. So you have all people that are animal owners that are on the board, myself, another, a couple of other people that have large pieces of property that aren't even affected by this bylaw. It's probably a good mix because you can make suggestions, you can sympathize with the animal owner, but you're not motivated by your own problem or your own constraints to try to guide the, guide the bylaw. So you're trying to come out with a good process, right? It's not an easy one, but we'll make it headway. But it comes down to whether or not it's going to be a bylaw or it's going to be a regulation.
Is there a draft, draft form yet?
Not yet, we're working on it.
Wouldn't it make sense to look at it and then see if we, board wants to get behind it and whether it should be a bylaw or a regulation or whatever?
So again, right, common sense doesn't always prevail. The question has been asked numerous times at the, at this committee, right? And being the chairman on that committee, it's my responsibility to try to seek that answer for them. So that's what I'm looking for, right?
So what, not to the room, but what would be, where this is fresh and new?
Yep.
And there's probably going to be bumps and hurdles along the way. What is easier to change, a bylaw or a regulation?
Well, this is why, this is why I was yielding to the administrator so he could give us all, some guidance, because he's more up on some of these rules and regulations.
It seems like it's going to work and we.
My hesitancy, go ahead, Matt.
No.
Oh, my hesitancy is not on the agenda. I think we probably need to.
Put it as a discussion item.
Yeah.
I think would be, so we can wait.
Yeah.
Just, just for discussion purposes and we can cover that.
Well, I, actually, I would disagree with that because under the rule of 48 hours, it is on there, and I don't have the opportunity to get to the answer anywhere else, right?
But I also, I mean, and you'll learn this, but the pace of government is slow. This is a hot-button issue, and I would think that we would methodically weigh in as needed. I don't know if there's a super pressing need that we need to go too deep into this issue tonight, having it not on the agenda.
It's not going too deep into the issue. It's trying to get information. So there's no votes being taken on this. It's not on for a vote, but it is open for discussion. And I'm looking for some guidance. So would you prefer that I just get the guidance from the town administrator outside of this body or respect this body and try to get the information, try to get the information from this body?
Well, I don't think it's an either-or thing.
Yeah. What's that?
I don't think it's an either-or thing.
Correct. I, I think it's, you know, can it wait till our next meeting so we can put it on as a discussion item and see what the direction is? It gives us, this is not new to me regarding the animal bylaw committee or, you know, what has, what has occurred, drafts and, or whatever, you know, whatever it is. So it gives me the chance, as well as the board, to kind of do some homework, take a look at it, and we could have a thorough discussion. I understand the difference between a bylaw and a regulation. They are, they are very important to see how they're written for bylaw and, and one is as a town adoption, a town meeting. And so we can further discuss it at our next meeting and that way there, everybody can kind of do some homework and weigh in on that. I think that would help, provide the correct guidance.
I'd like to see the substance of it first, too.
Again.
Is it public available or the regulation?
Give you the agenda. You can show up at the next meeting and listen to it because it's still a work in process. There is no, there is no document that's out there. It's still a work in process. But this becomes a contention point every single meeting. Is this going to be a bylaw or is it going to be a regulation, right? So.
That seems mechanical rather than the substance. Should the town be regulating the?
Okay, so.
To Ross's point, though, I think, because what's Leckman Smith has settled upon is, is I think is a good read on how Douglas reacts to these kinds of conversations in general. So with stormwater, what the stakeholder committee wanted was for a bylaw to enunciate the principles that are important for people's exercise of their rights, so that the town, I'm not a conspiracy theorist, so that nobody could change those things willy-nilly with very minimal process. So once it's in a bylaw and says you can't inspect without a warrant, okay? Then only town meeting can change that.
Right.
And nothing gets on the town meeting warrant without a lot of conversation and advertisement, and then you need a whole bunch of people to vote on it. Regulations tend to be driven on technical definitions, so what is going to count for X? If you wrote a bylaw like that, the bloody thing would be this, because there are as many situations as there are imaginations. Whereas, you know, regulations can be changed fairly quickly by the Board of Health, and they still have to follow a process, they still have to announce what they're doing on their agenda, but you're dealing with really technical definitions there.
Right.
And that doesn't necessarily impact on somebody's right to use their property or right to own animals, right to manage their animals if they want to. And I think that's what we're, everybody's looking for guidance on that because I think in the end, you split the difference like you did with stormwater, where the bylaw has general principles, and then a committee meets to write regulations to fill in the gaps where the bylaw might seem to be vague. So, I mean, I could, I could sit here and say, it is unlawful to abuse an animal in Douglas.
Yep.
In the bylaw. And then the regulation says abuse is defined as.
Yep.
And good luck writing that language. But I'm using it as an example on purpose. You name the offense and you probably authorize someone to investigate, and you name a fine if there's guilty. But you leave the definitions to the regulation so people can hash that out because values are going to change over time. But we've gotten quite a few complaints. It's just that because they're not all contemporaneous, you have to add them all up and realize. So we had a dispute on, I'm going to get the nut tree wrong, I'm going to say that was Chestnut Street, Hemlock Street, where we had a farm right up against the back of a residence, and we had a very large number of pigs. And pig manure fouled there well. It triggered a conversation, which was, we had no animal regulation, so it was discussed in the context of zoning.
Yep.
And that was a very uncomfortable and really long process to resolve that situation. And I think that's why this committee got started and why people are discussing the issue, because you have more and more people, it's more and more popular right now to have any number of farm animals in your yard. And people want to know what the rules are.
Is that really our call or is that the Board of Health's call?
Well, you're the chief policymaking board, and you'll determine access to the warrant. So you should be guiding it in a general fashion.
Mike, to your question, I think the answer's going to be both at some point, but it's not tonight.
Well, and I wasn't looking for a decision tonight. What I was looking for was some sort of guidance to go back to this committee and say that it's a very strong possibility it's going to be a combination of both. And through some very minor conversation that I had with the town administrator, the bylaw could be as simple as, is to protect the health and welfare of the animals and rodent infestation or something to that. Very, very simple thing. And then the regulation is going to dive into what it actually is, right? There's a lot of things that are being considered. I don't want to drag this meeting out and get into that meeting. But again, just looking for some guidance to go back, it's not my opinion, it's a consensus amongst the, the group of guys here tonight to, what type of answer would you like me to give them, right? I'm trying not to work on my own and try to work as a group, and I think that's what we should be doing.
So.
Put it on the agenda for tonight.
Yeah, just to discuss more, because I got a few, you know, want to know, you know, if it's a bylaw, is it going to be sponsored by the Board of Health? You mean.
Well, yeah, that's the other thing.
So some of the logistics.
Follow it, right?
So I think we can discuss that at our next meeting and just work on the logistics of it.
Honestly, urgency is another question that we probably should tackle. I would think I would support this being in the annual town meeting, absent, where we've gone this far without one. I think transparency, that's typically where we conduct all our policymaking legislation, that we've got some time to do it methodically. I know you've been meeting every other week, it feels like, and I think that's great, but I don't have the urgency that maybe others have.
Just a suggestion, stop and see the staff and the, and the Board of Health and see what they're faced with, and you may, you may have a difference of opinion.
Okay. All right. Ross, you're up, I guess.
Put it on the agenda for the discussion.
That's fine.
Yeah, I agree with that. It, it sounds like it's going to be a combination of the two, and just, just to filter out what's what.
And that was my feeling right along, but again, I don't feel it's my decision to make, so.
Okay.
That's why I'm before you guys.
Excellent.
Yeah, I agree to put it on that for deeper discussion for next meeting.
Okay. All right. It's a motion to go into executive session.
All right. I'll make a motion to go into executive session for A, the interest in real property on 77 Davis Street, B, potential litigation with MSHG and Shore Road, and to reconvene into open session for the sole purpose of adjournment.
All right, we have a motion by Ross. Second by Hal. All in favor?
Aye.
Pro call?
Smith, aye.
Davis, aye.
Stevens, aye.
Bonner, aye.
Patrick, aye.